Councilmember O'Kane. And we've got her. One, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. We're all here. All right. Kenmore City Council is now back in session. We're out of executive session. We're actually out of executive session and city attorney. Is the city attorney with us?
I don't see her.
And we need her. Well, I suppose we can come out of executive session and we can call the regular meeting to order and we can start with the flag salute. So if you all please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next item on the agenda is the roll call. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember O'Kane. Here. Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember File.
Present.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here. All right. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation, and I really hate going too far until the city attorney joins us. And I see the city attorney is here. There she is. Do we, when we're out of executive session, we started the general session, when do we need to make a motion if we're gonna do that?
You could just make a motion to, this is gonna sound funny, but you can make a motion to add on to the regular agenda.
Okay, fine.
An item resulting from executive session.
Great. Let's do that. We're coming to that point in a minute here, and actually, we passed that point. Actually, this is the perfect time to approve the agenda. So do we want to modify the agenda to entertain a motion from executive session? Is everybody in agreement with that? I need to hear a verbal yes.
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 Public needs to hear verbal yes. Okay. Then we will do that. And where do we want to put that? Do we want to put that right after the consent agenda, before the regular business agenda? And before the public hearing? Is that in, is council agreeable to that?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. And I believe council member Marshall, you're gonna make the motion, and do you have the motion?
I do.
Good, perfect. Okay, so then let's continue on with the agenda as modified, and this is a proclamation recognizing Affordable Housing Week. So whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity and whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And whereas the point in time count found 85 people in North King County sleeping outdoors without shelter in January of 2019. And 17% of Kenmore households are considered housing insecure because they were spending more than half of their income on rent and utilities. And whereas on March 23rd, 2020, Governor Inslee issued a statewide order to stay home, stay healthy, calling on all Washingtonians to avoid leaving their homes for any non-essential activities and adhere to social distancing requirements. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households. And whereas Governor Inslee has extended the residential eviction moratorium through October 15th, 2020, and to prevent families and individuals from losing their housing due to non-payment. And whereas housing stability and staying socially distant from those outside of our household has become our state's core public health strategy. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and community as a whole. And whereas the need for affordable homes across King County prior to the COVID-19 pandemic and the number of people experiencing homelessness had remained at crisis levels. And whereas united to raise public awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in Local Affordable Housing Week to elevate the critical need to preserve and increase affordable housing in our communities. And whereas the city of Kenmore endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week and endearns so, recommits itself to ensuring that our community recovers equitably equitable from the crisis at hand. And that all people in Kenmore live with dignity and safe, healthy, affordable homes now. Therefore, I, David Maker, Mayor, City of Kenmore, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 12th to October 16th as Affordable Housing Week in the city of Kenmore. All right. And clerk Anastasia, would you please fix the typos in there? There's insert city name in a couple of places. And with that, move on to the next item on the agenda. Public comments. And this is an opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you and the community. We ask that you please state your name and city of residence and limit your comments to three minutes. And there will be a timer on the screen. Will the clerk please call the first person?
Sure, I see seven people with their hands raised. I'm going to call them in this order. Abby London, Jennifer, Chris, Nadia Silver, Victoria Grayland, Stacy, and Aditi Jane. Abby London, please.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm actually have some comments for council member Herbig. Councilmember. You clearly don't respect the founding principles and values of this country, and I don't think you should be holding office. Last week, you instigated a fictitious and cruel plot to make a well-loved Seattle radio icon You colluded with Crystal Marks, the deputy mayor of Burien, and a self-proclaimed domestic terrorism Antifa supporter. Together, you made up lies about Dory Monson, a longstanding and well-respected member of the community, a father, a husband, a coach, and more importantly, someone willing to talk to anyone about anything. Instead of asking Dory what he meant or trying to be a guest on his show, which I'm sure you could have been, you took his words and you decided what they meant and smeared his name, and for that, you should apologize publicly. If you are not willing to apologize, you need to resign from office. Freedom of speech is protected in our country. People, especially entertainers, have a right to their opinions and to express themselves. You can't slander them because they go against the Democrat Party/Antifa/Communism/Domestic Terrorism. Your actions have not gone unnoticed, nor has your pandering to Antifa. Furthermore, on your Twitter page, you were openly against Lauren Colp for governor, a candidate Dory Monson is for. There is obviously a conflict there. You want Jay Inslee elected, and you went after a talk show host supporting Lauren Colp. You should not be going after the livelihood of entertainers or citizens who you agree with politically. Once again, I implore you to think about your actions and apologize to Dory Monson and the community at large. I would also like to hear you promise that you will not try and get any other citizens fired for disagreeing with you and your friends. At this point, you do not deserve the community's trust. Thank you.
I want to have a order. Mayor Baker.
What rule is being broken, Councilmember File?
Personal attacks directed to a fellow council member. All comments and remarks are to be directed to the chair.
I understand that, and I warned her, and I I understand that there were comments made, but I didn't take them as personal attack. And I was watching it very closely.
Mr. Mayor, this is the city attorney. Can I just make one additional comment?
Yes, you certainly can.
Um, I haven't had to do that, but the last comments came just very close. I just wanted to remind the council and the public that during an election time, the city is not allowed by state law to either discuss candidates in a way that opposes or favors them because that is the use of public facilities in support of an an election. And so the general comments didn't quite get there, but I just wanted again to alert the public. We cannot use this forum to support a person for candidate, for elected office, or to oppose them. And if I hear those, like, vote for someone, so I will actually need to ask you to stop doing that. The Public Disclosure Commission requires the city to stop such comments, so I just wanted to alert the public in advance. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Jennifer.
Anastasia, would you please keep your hand on the mute button in case we have to use it?
Okay, yes. Jennifer?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi. My name is Jennifer. I'm thankful for the, thankful today for the opportunity to set the record straight.
Will you state your full name and city you live in, Jennifer?
I'm not gonna, I'm not going to say my last name. I will say my first name. My first name is Jennifer, and I reside in King County. My name is Jennifer. I'm thankful today for the opportunity to set the record straight.
Is that adequate?
I don't think you can keep someone for talk from.
Okay. Just wanted your opinion. Thank you.
I'm thankful today for the opportunity to set the record straight about a recent false allegation against a respected and well-known radio host, Dory Monson. Dory recently tweeted last week a comment during the gubernatorial debate, and that comment was factual, and in no way was it derogatory. However, your deputy mayor has decided that he would conspire with his comrade Crystal Marks, another deputy mayor from Burien, and the two deputy mayors put a spin on the meaning of the tweet. In addition, these two deputy mayors, who are comrades, decided to reach out, and I quote, "to their allies," to launch a false narrative about the meaning of the tweet. Dory Monson has been suspended from his job because of these false statements. Citizens elect officials to conduct themselves in a professional manner. And in this particular case, your deputy mayor has failed. The manner in which this social media attack is, has occurred is shameful and unprofessional, and you know it, and an apology is owed.
Councilmember File.
To the sponsors that have accounts with
We have an attorney watching this.
All commercials until Dory Monson can be reinstated. Thank you.
Councilmember File, we have the city attorney watching this very carefully, and so am I.
Chris.
After the 19-yard line. I do believe this is normally his, by far, the best quarterback against zone.
Chris.
And tonight, he is stronger, 12 and 22 with 55% completions. No touchdowns and an interception, so that zone concept and changing it up is really.
Chris, will you please turn your television down?
Chris.
Go on to the next one.
Okay. Nadia Silver. Nadia Silver.
Hi, yes, hello. I'm ready.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. First of all, I want to say hello to the council. Happy Hispanic Latinx Month. In this celebration and month, Dia de los Muertos is exactly, to be exact, is on November 2nd. But for the broad Latinx and Hispanic community, it's celebrated, you know, pretty much all of October in sparsing so that family can meet up and honor. Dia de los Muertos is a time to honor your family members and those that have passed in the year before. And in this time of COVID-19, now more than ever, that family connection needs to be respected and to be honored, and to whoever has their TV, please mute. In any case, to be respected and to be honored. And as a spiritual leader, I am an elder in the hedge witch magical community. Again, whoever has that TV, please mute it.
Anastasia, who do we have on that possibly has a TV going? Speakers on?
Muted on my end are Ms. Nadia Silver, Mr. Mayor Baker, and myself, and I am not in the vicinity of a TV.
I can clearly hear Monday Night Football.
A minute and a half extension because of the disturbance.
That's better. I don't hear anything now.
Thank you, and I kindly request a minute and a half extension because of the disturbance. Can you hear me?
We hear you fine, Ms. Silver.
Okay, I just don't know if it was approved. I request a minute and a half extension because of the disturbance. Now make that two minutes because it's taken two whole minutes. In any case, please have that approved so that I can continue.
Please continue.
Again, Dia de los Muertos is a time to honor those who've passed in this time of COVID-19. Now more than ever, that family connection is necessary, if not vital, for mental health and also that equitability that we are working so hard for here in Kenmore. We may be a small city, but it's because of that smallness that we have that community and that feel for closeness to be applicable. We do have a Latinx and Hispanic community, and so if we can have that honored by having that put on the calendar for November 2nd and/or possibly one whole week at the end of October, being, you know, honored as Hispanic Latinx, Dia de los Muertos, something, something week, that would be great. I also wanted to say, if we could get an update on the mental health local access, that would be great. I know you guys are working on that. I just haven't heard an update about it. And finally, happy post, excuse me, happy post-national coming-out day to everyone on the council, especially council member File, where her platform was, that she was LGBTQIA+. I wanted to share just a 30 seconds of the story. I am also, as I've mentioned to the council before, LGBTQIA+, specifically, I am on the bisexual spectrum. I'm wearing my colors today. And it was, it's a long journey. What bisexuals go through is a completely different experience than what anyone who's straight or LGBTQIA. They have to constantly come out to everybody that they ever have a relationship with, or new friends, or new family members, constantly remind people that they are bisexual. That just because they're in a relationship with a heterosexual person, also known as a heterosexual relationship, that doesn't necessarily make them heterosexual only. They're still bisexual, and vice versa, for being in an LGBTQIA+ based relationship. The joke goes around, straight was a phase in the community, and that is no more or less true, especially for bisexuals. So I wanted to recognize my fellow LGBTQIA members for coming-out day that was yesterday. I wanted to recognize them and let them know that you don't have to come out to be valid, but your experience is valid. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver.
Victoria Grayland. Victoria Grayland.
Hi, I'm Vicki Grayland, and I live in Kenmore. I invite you all to join me in celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day and to acknowledge that Kenmore is located on traditional Coast Salish land. Also, please join me in honoring and thanking Indigenous people everywhere who have been the earth stewards for so many generations. Fall is but your time for cities. This is the third year in a row that I have advocated for funding climate action. And it's heartening to see that the city intends to do that through the Strategic Opportunities Fund. As a member of People for Climate Action, I believe that joining the King County Cities Climate Collaborative was a wise move. And with their recent release of the Climate Action Toolkit, I see that past investment paying off. I expect further collaborative efforts will improve our countywide climate plans. It was also good to see a commitment to use money from the same fund to pay for engineering consulting expertise and specialized legal counsel for air quality and emissions from industrial plants in the city. So thank you for all your efforts. You've done a lot of good work in the last three years, and I'm hopeful for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grayland.
Stacy. Stacy.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hey, thank you. As we celebrate Affordable Housing Week with proclamations throughout King County, it is important to put forward the actions to reduce homelessness. With temporary relief from the extended COVID-19 moratorium extending to December 31st, many of our residents currently out of work or on cut hours, they are one step from homelessness. How many residents will be evicted when this moratorium expires? The King County Affordable Housing Task Force of 2019 projects that an additional 244,000 low and very low housing units will be needed in the next five years. While some bonus market rate units sit empty for months, others are filled with temporary tenants that are one bill, one injury, one paycheck away from being evicted. And many times, four to five minimum wage earners are sharing a one-bedroom unit. Many camp unity homeless occupants are minimum wage workers. Many others reside in their cars. Let's look at the numbers. The King County average median income is 100 to 126,000. The moderate low income is 70 to 80% or 70,000 to $80,000 annually. And this is a level that most of our low affordable income has been developed here in Kenmore. With this exemption of taxes, the low income is about 50 to 60,000, and very low is 30,000 and under. Most seniors and disabled received fixed income of 23 to $30,000. That's it. We keep hearing that only 30% of a person's income should be spent on the housing, but cities continue to allow and support the density and rental rates in the bonus and market rates. These numbers don't support what we need for housing. We need you to support St. Vincent's Imagine Housing, local churches that want to build and support real affordable housing in our community. We need you to require more developers to help meet these needs and build at least 25 to 30% of their units at the low and very low affordable housing rates in 30% or less to qualify for permits, incentives, and tax exemptions. We need you to apply for grant money to support building low and very low-income housing units in any new complexes or developments. Stepping forward with the moratorium to preserve the mobile home park zoning was one great step. We need our leaders in Kenmore to make a big leap and step forward with very low affordable housing units. Thank you for your time.
Stacy. Aditi Jane.
Hello, my name is Aditi Jane, and I live in Bothell. I wanted to further emphasize the complete violation of public health and safety that the asphalt plant, and by extension, the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency has shown by continuing to operate during COVID-19, which is a disease, a disease that targets the lungs, and the wildfires a couple of weeks ago. And considering the fact that the effects on people's health of most carcinogens and fumes that citizens have been complaining about will not be apparent until a few decades from now, I'd like to take a second to talk about the Tuskegee syphilis study that happened in the mid-1900s. As many know, doctors did a study of the effects of syphilis in humans for long periods of time by refusing black men treatment by injecting some with syphilis, even though the treatment for syphilis was widely available. In fact, the doctors even refused to acknowledge that what they had was in fact syphilis, preferring to keep their patients in the dark. They refer to it as bad blood. And I bring this up because I think we can all agree that this is not how we want the situation with the asphalt pollution or the asphalt emissions to play out in 50 years from now, when the effects of asphalt production may be, may become more widely known and the data more widely available. Not to mention that many Kenmore residents are already feeling the impact of these emissions. And it is because of this that I'm urging the city to advocate for public health and safety regarding the emissions that are coming out of the asphalt plant to the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency. This is an environmental justice issue, and it must be addressed in order for the city and the county's actions to have any resemblance towards the final goal of sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
John Peoples. Mr. Peoples.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. John Peoples, Kenmore. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having me this evening. Two items of interest to the civic life of our fellow Kenmore residents here. First, Happy Columbus Day. Christopher Columbus is a worthy figure to celebrate for his contributions to world history. For some good perspective, see the videos produced by PragerU. Like almost everyone who has ever lived, Columbus was indeed flawed. But we don't celebrate his flaws. We celebrate and honor his accomplishments and contributions. The revolting destruction of public artwork sweeping our nation are vile insults to our civic order and public safety. I hope all perpetrators are held accountable for their criminal behavior, and I dearly hope that no such disorder visits itself on Kenmore. Just think of all the statues to a certain southern preacher that would have to come down if we judged him so harshly. In life, he, one, had eyes for women besides his wife, and, two, once advised a young man to pray away the gay. That would be Martin Luther King Jr. Same thing with Chief Seattle, who owned slaves and who is responsible for the enslavement of many of his fellow Puget Sound area Indians. Rather than succumb to the bloodlust of cancel culture which seeks to destroy, let's instead recognize contributions to our society that these great people achieved. The same considerations should be made for Dory Monson, a beloved radio host on Cairo Radio and for the Seahawks. Mr. Monson tweeted a fact, as he understood it during last week's gubernatorial debate, to point out correctly the hypocrisy of the current governor with respect to the use of scientific inquiry in crafting public policy. The tweet was falsely denounced as transphobic. His employers crumbled before the mob and suspended him, thereby endangering his livelihood. His fans are fighting for his return to our airwaves. The bad news is that two local city council members participated in this vile mob action. One of Burien, who has described police officers as pigs, and one of our own Kenmore City Council. I ask that the city council refrain from engaging in any such un-American threats to freedom of expression, especially unpopular speech. While Mr. Monson is temporarily off the air, I will state the fact. The tweet in question neither harmed nor devalued anyone. I look forward to using my voice as a citizen of the good old U.S.A. to state these facts at every opportunity. I welcome a reasoned discussion of these I welcome a reasoned discussion of these topics. Thank you and good night.
I see four additional hands raised. I'd like to call them in this order. David Morton, Rose H., Elizabeth Mooney, and Chris. Mr. Morton.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, I'm David Morton. I live near Redmond. Kenmore deserves clean air, but many residents are concerned about an environmental threat in their own backyard, a hot-mix asphalt plant operating close to where they live, work, play, eat, and shop. This facility is completely incompatible with its surroundings. It's contrary to common sense and logic. But the industrial park where Cadman Materials is located has a history of loosely regulated, heavily polluting industry, so it's not surprising that Cadman is carrying on that tradition. Neighbors have long complained of suffering ill effects like headaches, sore throats, and nausea from breathing the strong, foul-smelling fumes from the plant. We need to be clear here. What we are talking about is environmental injustice. This is one of the most environmentally burdened neighborhoods around. The asphalt fumes are a fundamental threat to the quality of life in Kenmore. Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, or PSCAA, consistently classifies the Cadman facility as a hot-mix asphalt plant and has permitted Cadman to manufacture hot-mix asphalt, or HMA. It's my understanding that Cadman is not permitted to make warm-mix asphalt, or WMA. However, Cadman is trying to do just that by mixing gravel and sand with medium-curing cutback asphalt. While the EPA document AP-42 lists measured emission factors for air pollutants from HMA plants, AP-42 does not characterize the air emissions from WMA plants. In other words, PSCAA is allowing Cadman to use a process and materials for which there is no information for estimating Cadman's air emissions. By using medium-curing cutback asphalt, which is asphalt cement dissolved in jet fuel, a facility can release tons of unhealthy jet fuel vapors into the air breathed by the people of Kenmore. But by classifying Cadman as an HMA facility, PSCAA has misrepresented the true nature of Cadman's air emissions. An HMA facility uses performance-graded asphalt cement, which is not dissolved in jet fuel, to manufacture its product. The level of air emissions from an HMA facility is low if the process and materials used are those described in AP-42. PSCAA has yet to do a credible investigation and is either unwilling to enforce Cadman's permit or is unable to. The agency that is supposed to protect our air quality is not enforcing environmental law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton.
Rose H.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Hi, my name is Rose Hendricks. I live in Kenmore. I'm here about the budget that's being presented today. I wanted to talk about the amount allocated in the General Fund for Public Safety, and specifically that it is more than the combined total allocated for public works maintenance, public works engineering, community development, or development services. And I think that, given that, it should be uncontroversial to expect a comparable level of scrutiny on that service that we are being provided and to what degree we need it and to right-size it to our community and to subject it to clear and evaluation, as we have spent a lot of time going over all those other four categories. And this is more public money than all of those other categories combined. So, I would really like to push that a detailed evaluation of the community's needs regarding public safety, separate from its current contract with an eye towards right-sizing that contract with King County Sheriff's Office at the next opportunity to renegotiate the intergovernmental agreement. And I would like to get that added to the 2020 to 2021 City Council goals as an explicit item. I really appreciate the work that went into this document. I particularly like to relay compliments to the city manager on the note written at the beginning. It was very eloquent on the subject of the possibility of reevaluating the role of policing. I might be misremembering. But then, I would just like the City Council goals to reflect that. And I think it's not unreasonable to take a hard look at where that money is going and if it's the right thing for our community. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks.
Elizabeth Mooney.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, Kenmore City Council. Elizabeth Mooney, resident in Kenmore. I support Vicky Grayland's comments, Aditi Jane's comments, and David Morton's comments fully. I'd like to know how the request from the city of Kenmore, of Cadman, and potentially their lessor Cal Portland is going. And with regard to that, I have emailed staff and would like to make sure that we, the citizens who are concerned about this, stay a part of this conversation with those heavy industries. We do not want to lack transparency, so please keep us in the loop and engaged in those conversations so that we can be a part of that. We understand that the Kenmore Navigation Channel is going to be dredged, and that's primarily for the benefit of Cal Portland, the lessor of the Cadman facility that is presently in violation, and Puget Sound Clean Air Agency is not going to help out those breathing these fumes quickly. So, winter is around the corner, and with it comes rains and rain and cold and dark. And of course, our winter temperature inversions, just as every Kenmore citizen should be careful about using our fireplaces during inversions, except, of course, where it's the sole source of heat, so should our industries be careful about emitting toxics, and particularly during those same inversions. Certainly, Puget Sound Clean Air Agency can find citizens for using their fireplaces during burn bans, but apparently not industrial sources. I would suggest the City Council release a proclamation to make everyone in Kenmore aware of the dangers of temperature inversions, and possibly, for our citizens' public health and safety, please consider writing a proclamation that states "City of Kenmore does not support the asphalt plant in Kenmore operating during the burn bans or during hazardous air pollution conditions, such as inversions or smoky conditions." This summer's fire season has reinforced the potential health dangers from particulates alone. As with wearing a mask during COVID, be mindful of what we put into the air during temperature inversions is just part of being a good neighbor. Finally, this weekend's fire at the Tacoma Asphalt Plant should alert us to the dangers of having industrial activities next door to residential neighborhoods. Apparently, they were lucky that the wind conditions were such that most of the toxic smoke did not inundate nearby homes. If such an event were to happen in Kenmore, is there a plan to deal with the fire? And will we be equally lucky that the winds will be just right? Not to mention, what happens when all the water to put out the fires goes into Lake Washington on our shoreline? This would be a very good time to reassess that heavy industry at our shoreline and the emergency plans and safety precautions. Please consider health and safety as the highest priority, council members.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
All right, is there anybody else? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Is there anybody else wishing to be heard? Then I declare the public comments closed.
Sorry, there's one more person that had a hand raised. This is Chris, no last name given.
Hey, I'm back, so that wasn't my TV, just for the record. Just kidding. Anyway, as the other people have quite eloquently talked about previously, I just want to say I find it disturbing regarding the deputy mayor's anti-free speech stance regarding Dory Monson. Should be a concern to everyone when a public official advocates for the firing of a private citizen for a disagreement. That's all I have, and I appreciate the eloquence of the past commentators on that subject.
Thank you. I see two further hands raised. Beth. Shall I proceed, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Beth Darasang and Autumn Eyre. Beth, can you hear us? Beth, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. I just getting unmuted there. Yes, my name is Beth Dorance Young, and I'm calling also. Excuse me?
What city do you live in, please?
Oh, I live in Seattle, in North Seattle. And I'm running in the 46th district, which includes Kenmore. I'm running for state representative.
We don't.
I'm sorry.
About any elections. This is not the appropriate place to do that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, I understand. I'm just explaining relevance to Kenmore. Anyway, my call is about, again, the deputy mayor and his statements about Dory Monson. And what Dory Monson tweeted was an accurate statement of Washington state law. And since it was an accurate statement of Washington state law, it's not phobic about anyone. And people may have disagreements about law and may have disagreements about policy, state policy, but we can all be offended at different people, but we should not be asking for them to be fired and using our public platform to do that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Autumn.
Hi, I don't have. Do you have any questions before I start?
You can start now.
I don't have any. I will not be as eloquent as the other speakers, as I wasn't prepared.
Please state your full name and what city you live in.
Autumn Eyre, Kenmore. And I'm just calling in to echo our concerns about government officials having anything to do with the private business of somebody who is a voice for small businesses like myself. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, I declare the public hearing. The public comments closed. Thank you for your comments. And if we can, please move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Some moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. All right. Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of passing the Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent Agenda stands passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. This is a public hearing for the capital improvement program for parks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm so sorry. I believe the agenda was modified.
That's right, it was amended. We're going to entertain a motion from the executive session. Councilmember Marshall, do you have a motion?
I have a motion. Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize and direct the city manager and city attorney's office to abate vehicle-related code violations related to King County Superior Court case number 18-2-07642-1SEA at the property located at 1500558th Lane, Northeast Kenmore, Washington 98028, and to take all necessary steps to abate the conditions on said property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember, file. All right. Any further discussion? Councilmember Marshall.
Yes, I believe that the motion is justified, and the effort is justified here based upon all the facts and circumstances to at least show we're serious about code violations and we care about the impact on the community.
Anyone else? Councilmember Curtis.
So, we've already done vehicle violation abatement twice in the past, and it hasn't produced the desired outcome. So, I don't think doing it a third time is going to add any more benefit.
Anybody else? All right, there's a motion in front of us to proceed with the abatement of the automobiles on the property. Will a clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Curtis.
No.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnek.
Yes, for the same reasons that Councilmember Marshall stated.
Councilmember File.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
The vote is six to one.
All right. Motion passes six-one. Now, next item on the agenda is public hearing on the Capital Improvement Program for Parks, Transportation, Surface Water, and Facilities for 2021 through 2026. Who on staff is handling this?
This would be Joanne Gregory, Finance and Administration Director.
Great. Any comments you want to make on this?
Yes.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, all of the mayor and council members. So, tonight, we're holding a public hearing on the proposed six-year capital improvement plan to provide an opportunity for the community to be heard on the subject prior to official adoption. Last week, October 5th, council was presented with a detailed overview and discussion opportunity regarding the 30 projects included in the six-year plan. These total $87,410,000 over the six-year period and $66,924,000 over the next two years. Since we reviewed the CIP with you last week, a few minor changes were made. First, the surface water capital expenditures were reduced by $550,000 when we realized that was the expenditure projection for 2020 and not 2021. Also, you will notice that several park projects are in or near their required mitigation maintenance phases, and some costs are funded by REIT and some were funded by impact fees. Those particular ongoing costs are not really the best use of these scarce capital resources. So, where possible, we have reallocated and used the King County Park Levy to fund the mitigation and maintenance costs for those newer projects. Otherwise, the CIP is presented as presented last week, and the list of projects are as shown on my screen, which I was going to share with you now. And all the attachments, projections, and project descriptions were included in the posted agenda. So, there are 13 transportation projects, nine park projects, seven surface water projects, and one facilities project. Debbie Bent, John Vicente, Richard Sawyer, and Rob Carlinz are all also standing by, should you have any questions. So, if you do, we'd be happy to take those prior to the public hearing. Thank you.
Council, have any questions? We've got a split screen, so I can't see everybody. And if I don't see you, please speak up. Any questions? Hearing none, seeing none. I declare the public hearing open for Capital Improvement Program for Parks, Transportation, Surface Water, and Facilities for 2021 through 2026. The clerk, please call the first person. The clerk, please call the first person.
I do not see any hands raised.
Anybody wishing to be heard, uh, on Capital Improvement Program for Parks, Transportation, and Surface Water and Facilities for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six? Is there anybody wishing to be heard? Is there anybody wishing to be heard on the Capital Improvement Program for Parks, Transportation, Surface Water, and Facilities for twenty-one, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six?
Ms. Elizabeth Mooney has shown an interest.
Ms. Mooney?
I, I'm really happy that you are working on our parks and our surface water. I, I sort of regret that when we filled out the questionnaires about parks and sidewalks and, and all of that kind of got bundled together. If I could do it all over again, I wish that we were saving some money, where we could and where we could use our volunteers and our nonprofits. But all in all, thank you for focusing on our, our environment to the extent that we can. Let's keep working together and have a good evening. Stay safe and healthy. Bye.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else wishing to be heard? Final last call.
Rose H. Rose Hendricks?
Oh, my God.
Rose Hendricks?
Hello. Hi, uh, Rose Hendricks, living in Kenmore. Um, I just wanted to say, um, thank you for focusing on pedestrian and cyclist safety um, as a person who commuted by bike back when going places was a thing. Um, and has been in situations where insufficient attention to cyclist safety meant that I was thrown into oncoming traffic. I really appreciate that it's a priority, um, because it, it makes Kenmore better. It makes Kenmore better for everyone. Um, thanks so much.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Capital Improvement Program for Parks, Transportation, Surface Water, and Facilities.
Nadia Silver?
I also wanted to add my voice in saying thank you for thinking about us pedestrians and public transportation workers. Um, since I moved here, I've been, um, trying to get the council to improve our sidewalks and walkways and put sidewalks where they're currently just not exist any. Um, when we don't have bikes and we don't have, um, hoverboards and we don't have cars, we don't have wheels of any kind, our own two feet are our wheels, and if those are broken, well, we're S.O.L. So I just wanted to say thank you for considering the pedestrians as well.
Thank you.
Wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard on Capital Improvement Program for Parks, Transportation, Surface Water, and Facilities for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-six? Anybody else wishing to be heard? I declare the public hearings closed. The chair will now entertain a motion for ordinance number twenty dash, uh, zero five one two, providing capital improvement for Parks, Transportation, and Surface Water Facilities for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Gregory?
I, thank you. I have no further comments other than the ones I just provided. Recommend that, uh, council approve the ordinance.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? I'm not seeing anybody. So, there's a motion in front of us to approve ordinance number, uh, twenty dash zero five one two for Providing Capital Improvement Program for Parks, Transportation, Surface Water, and Facilities for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six. Please take the role.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnek?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is briefing on Puget Sound Energy service levels presented by Assistant, uh, City Manager, Ms. Owesley. Thank you for, uh, getting this, uh, this metric in there and requiring him to do this. We really appreciate it.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I'm Nancy Owesley, and I am joined tonight by, uh, it looks like three representatives from Puget Sound Energy, Julian Low, Braylon Asaw, and Patrick Robinson. Uh, this will be the, they are going to be presenting the first a- annual, uh, report on system reliability and investments.
Can I, can I get you to hold up just one second? The clerk, you've got some people in here that don't belong as part of the panel. Can we please fix that?
Actually, I be- I believe these are three authorized guests.
Mayor, no, please demole me. This is too much power.
I'm looking at Rose H.
Oh, I see. Standby.
All right.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. As you know, the city council approved a new, uh, franchise agreement and a memorandum of, of understanding with PSE in two thousand nineteen. And that, that MOA, uh, focuses on reliability. As you know, uh, PSE has been, uh, making investments and, and improvements in the, in the system in Kenmore, which at the time that we were, uh, working on the new franchise agreement, a number of the circuits serving Kenmore were among the least, uh, reliable in, in the entire system. But, uh, through identifying, uh, infrastructure improvements and, and maintenance, like vegetation management, I think you will be pleased to, to see some, some, uh, very promising improvements in system reliability in Kenmore. As I said, this is the first of, uh, first annual report, uh, and, um, we look forward to hearing from, uh, our, uh, associates at PSE about, uh, how they are improving the, uh, power reliability in Kenmore. Uh, I, I, I think that some of the things that you, you may recall that, that we talked about, uh, as, as the, uh, franchise agreement was being developed was things like vegetation management and, and, uh, moving some distribution lines where, to where they would be more accessible by the crews of, of PSE. So those are only a couple of things that, that, uh, we have noticed. And, uh, and we look forward also to hearing about some of the other, uh, features like, uh, vehicle charging stations that, that are showing up in, in the city thanks to, uh, the commitment from the utility. So with that, uh, I will turn the, uh, presentation over to Julian Low to get us started.
Hi, good evening. Julian Low, Local Government Affairs Manager for Puget Sound Energy, and thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to present this evening. Uh, we are pleased to be here to share, um, reporting on, uh, electric reliability from twenty nineteen. Again, uh, the majority of, um, mayor, deputy mayor, council members, uh, did approve, uh, this franchise, and again, wanted to, uh, thank the city of Kenmore, uh, policymakers, and then also, uh, city staff and city attorney as well for, uh, helping to usher in that, uh, franchise agreement. And, um, so tonight, uh, we'll go ahead and just share some images of, um, some of the improvements that have been made throughout the city, um, and then also, uh, touch a little bit about, um, the reliability report itself, where Kenmore's, uh, circuits stand against the PSE system as a whole. And then also touch on, um, other priorities that I know, um, you know, matter to, um, Kenmore elected officials and your constituents, namely issues involving sustainability, uh, electric vehicle charging. And then also, um, we'll conclude by, uh, just again, sharing messages that we share throughout our service territory about, uh, preparedness, uh, as we head into storm season. And, um, you know, I think we had some, um, pretty strong gusts this, um, weekend, and I think that, I think we did fairly well. So anyhow, I'll, uh, turn it over to Patrick Robinson, who is our municipal liaison manager. He'll be, uh, walking us through the slide deck. So, Patrick, why don't you go ahead and share your screen?
All right. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm going to this, uh, right, so, um, we're going to, um, start off with, uh, I guess, reliability improvements to date. This is just kind of overall, uh, view of where we've been working, what we've been doing. This is from, uh, I guess, transmission, high level down to substations, down to the circuits, um, and then the equipment within the circuits, our, our distribution, automation, um, smart grid technology. And so, um, this is, uh, twenty sixteen to, to date. In the last year, um, we have finished off, uh, phase two of rerouting the, um, Kenmore twenty-sixth Circuit. Uh, that's number nine, um, up here in the corner. As well as, uh, some smart grid, uh, smart reclosers. Uh, so that's number five, um, also in that corner. But so each of these X's, um, represents one of our, our smart reclosers. Twenty nineteen also had, uh, tree wire added to fifty-fifth Ave, Northeast. Uh, the Inglewood Substation, which is down, uh, in the southwest corner, um, is being upgraded, getting similar upgrades to the Kenmore Substation, and then, uh, we also did some replacement of underground cables. And so, uh, just to kind of show you what some of these upgrades look like, this first picture is one of our smart reclosers, allowing for, like, automatic, uh, fixes i- in some situations, or, uh, if that's not possible, then allows for, I guess, remote operation so that we don't have to send, uh, somebody out to, to look at every, everything, or to, to be manually, um, switching that over. Uh, second picture in the middle is the former Kenmore twenty-sixth Circuit, um, and its routes went through backyards, um, pretty densely treed. And so the third picture is, uh, where that circuit runs currently. Uh, as you can see, uh, great access, uh, fewer trees. Um, and also, um, a one note, if you can look in the top right corner of that photo, um, those highest three lines, the two lines on the outside, uh, I guess, first and third lines are kind of black, and if you can see the, the second one in the middle has got a metallic sheen, and so, um, those two dark lines, um, are insulated tree wire, and so that's a, a visual indication, um, as you're driving around town. And if it's, if it's that darker wire, it's, it's tree wire versus, uh, that middle one that's not. Um, and then, uh, veg management. Um, you may also have seen us out in the, the right way. Uh, we've got some, some pretty big equipment, or at least our contractor asked one. Veg, vegetation management crews are on a four-year cycle in Kenmore, and we also have patrols that go out every two years to do, uh, just kind of a check on things. We call it hot spotting to make sure, um, nothing is progressing or growing faster than anticipated. Um, but, yeah, these, these crews are out there proactively trying to keep the, the lines clear. This is a photo of the Inglewood Substation. Uh, it currently has, uh, its new smart breakers installed. Uh, so that's the four arrows on the bottom, um, pointing to those four boxes. Those are the new breakers, which, uh, once this, uh, substation is turned back on, will be communicating with smart grid technology out on the circuits. Uh, this substation is also getting new cables, uh, from the breakers out to the circuit. So we call those the getaways, uh, but those are all running underground, and so we're just updating, putting new, new cables in the ground as well. That's happening, uh, I believe, this, this week, next week, I believe, wrapping up. The last day I saw was the nineteenth. Um, and that'll be finished. And so, yes, the, the big picture we're seeing here, there's, there's been improvements in reliability. Kenmore's, uh, average, let's see, Kenmore's reliability was within eight minutes, I guess that was outage, sorry. Um, eight minutes of the PSE system average for du- duration in twenty nineteen. So, city of Kenmore as a whole, the average duration of an outage was within eight minutes of PSE system. There, managed to say it. Um, but so, uh, and I guess final point, we're, we're expecting to see more as more reliability projects go in. And so I've got two graphs for you this evening. First graph here is, uh, looking at customer minutes interrupted, um, per circuit. So it's kind of a busy graph here, but we've got each of Ken, the circuits serving Kenmore, um, and their five years, uh, historical data. Customer minute interrupted, CMI, is looking at total accumulation on the circuit, um, of, of outages. So if I have an hour out, my neighbor has an hour out, there's a hundred of us on that day that have an hour outage, and that's just, that's a hundred hours. It's the outage duration times the number of houses. So, a lot of houses on a circuit or like a substantial outage, uh, that's how you get such high numbers, um, six, six million minutes. Like you see right at the twenty fifteen, Inglemore thirteen, that very first graph. And I guess before I jump into some of the specifics, I was gonna share, I guess, just a geographic breakdown of the circuit. So, the first four circuits here, Inglewood thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen is going to be located down in the southeast corner of Kenmore. Uh, Inglewood seventeen is the only one of these four that serves, uh, solely Kenmore. The other three, uh, are split between Kenmore, Bachel, uh, and Kirkland. Kenmore Circuits twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, the four in the middle, uh, serve solely Kenmore. That's going to be downtown Kenmore, the lake shore, and up into the northwest corner. NBO twenty-six, that's North Bachel, is going to be in the northeast corner. And then, uh, the last two, Wayne thirteen and fifteen, kind of come in along, uh, five two two, and are also shared with Bachel. But.
Mr. Robinson, do you have a minute to entertain some questions from council?
I think I can do that. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not seeing everybody, so if you have a question, please go ahead.
Councilmember Shrubnek?
Thanks. I just had a quick, uh, one on this particular, um, visual. I mean, all of the substations seem to be, or, um, circuits seem to be going in the right direction over time, except for Inglewood fifteen. And is that, there was, it, and this is including storm events, but I think there was an extraordinary occurrence with the, at Holmes Point, and is that what we should attribute this to, or was there something? Okay.
Yep, um, I've got a note here specifically for Inglewood fifteen. We had the snowstorm February of twenty nineteen, uh, and then the landslide on Holmes Point Drive, and those two items contributed heavily to that number. Yeah. Because in general, we, we do seem to be going the same way, or in the right way. Inglewood 15 being the sore thumb there. It was a rough year for, for them. But as I mentioned, the substation has got the news, the new breakers, getting the new cables. And that's the same treatment that the Kenmore Substation got previously. So we'll be looking to hopefully see some similar I guess, numbers as we're, as we're seeing in the Kenmore Substation and the Kenmore Circuits here. Then this second graph is a direct comparison of Kenmore Circuits to the PSE system. I've got two notes here for you. First, when I sent this in for the agenda, I mislabeled this title. So in your agenda, it says that this is Sadie, but this is customer minutes interrupted, the same as the previous graph. So my apologies there. And the second note, this is percentiles, not total minutes. And so in this case, higher is better. That's the opposite of the previous graph. But this was something that was requested by the city. It allows for a direct comparison to Exponent's original graph. We're looking with the light green bars at a five-year average. So that's 2015 to 2019. And then we also just pulled out 2019 as a standalone with those dark blue bars to show that while those averages still reflect our high outage numbers from previous years, 2015, 2016, we're, we're pulling up those, those numbers in 2019.
I have one more question, and it's on this one. So we've got two comparisons, one is time, but I, I think the light, is the light green the PSE average and the dark green is Kenmore? Is that correct?
So the light green, so all of it's Kenmore. And the light green is five-year average for City of Kenmore. So the light green takes the reliability for 2015 through 2019, averages it out. That kind of takes some of the bumps out of it. 2019, or sorry, the dark bars are just 2019 to show this first year what, what we're achieving.
Definitely misleading. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I have a question on this graph.
Certainly.
So this graph was a little confusing to me. So would 0% be a totally failed system? And 100% be a totally functional, never missing anything system?
So this is this is a ranking of all of PSE's circuits across the system. And so like, we have 1,120 something circuits. And so this low number is going to be ranked low out of those 1,100. A high number is going to be ranked higher out of those 1,100. If you're looking specifically at how reliable it was, I'm going to hop back to this previous graph and say that, like, these are going to show you your, your specific reliability. This is going to be kind of just spread out how it compares against the other circuits. But higher, higher bars mean higher reliability.
So 50th, so 50th percentile, half, is that like median? So half of all your circuits in your whole system are above that and half of them are below that?
Correct.
Okay.
And this, this is Nancy. I'll just remind council that, that leading up to the time that we were negotiating the new franchise agreement, seven of the 10 circuits in Kenmore were at or below the 25 percentile of all circuits. So they were performing, you know, in the, in the bottom quarter of, of the entire system. So, and, and so I think what, what we're seeing, at least for the, the trends of 2019 is, is pretty encouraging.
That's right. Thank you, Nancy. And, you know, part of the reason why we wanted to show this, we can certainly go back and for future years, maybe show this in a way that's a little bit easier to, to see here. But again, we really, again, Nancy's correct, we really wanted to speak specifically to percentiles. And certainly, we took away from a past council meeting, the importance of showing how Kenmore Circuits are stacking up to other PSE circuits. And so but again, we just feel that this was an important way to demonstrate, you know, again, what 2019 looked like. And then also wanted to provide that broader context, because that's certainly something we heard from elected leaders like yourselves and from city manager Carl Lindsay and others.
Yeah, my generator, we've gotten a big workout by now. And so far, I haven't had to turn it on for two years. So there is, there is some improvements.
And as I mentioned, with the Inglewood Substation, it's getting the, the same upgrades that the Kenmore Substation got. And so looking forward, we will be looking for similar improvements. It'll also be getting the, the Inglewood Circuits will also be getting some of the smart, smart reclosers, the smart grid technology. So I guess, this, this is year one, and we'll, we'll be looking to the future to see continued improvements. And which, I guess, speaking of looking to the future, I've got a really quick, a total investments slide. Over 2016 to present, about $23.5 million of reliability improvements in the Kenmore grid, the replacing or moving lines, the smart grid technology, as well as vegetation management. 2017 to present, we're coming up on 100 miles of line trims now, and almost $700,000 invested there. For 2019, that was right around $200,000. And so looking at the next couple of years, we have the, another substation, so the Wayne Substation, that's going to be number two on the far right of this photo, will, is next in line to get the, the upgrades that Kenmore and Inglewood Substations have received. Will be putting in more smart reclosers. So that's numbers three, four, and five. It's number one there, right in the middle, is just, I guess, upsizing those cables. That's a, that's a project for load growth, making sure that as, as load increases there, we're, we're planning for the, for reliability. And then number six and seven here are, are, those are our underground cable replacement program. So getting to those cables and making sure that they're updated before they start causing problems. And I think with that, we're going to jump back to Julian.
Yeah, thank you, Patrick. And we also wanted to identify another element of the MOA included in the franchise, which, as you all may remember, and also for the new members, you know, I provided an overview of Puget Sound Energy's Up and Go Electric Vehicle Program. And that's our effort to work on installing vehicle chargers in residential workplace and multifamily settings. And so we are pleased to have partnered with City of Kenmore to install these stalls at Kenmore City Hall. I also wanted to share that, you know, not only should EV charging be available to those living in single-family residences, but we also feel that it's an important component for multifamily residential settings as well. And so here we have a photo from several weeks ago. But those green lines indicate future EV charging at Inglewood Shores. And so I just wanted to quickly touch on that. We continue to partner with stakeholders all around our service territory to install charging. It's that, you know, chicken or the egg thing. Do you install the charging first, and then people will buy or buy EVs? Or do people buy EVs and then you install the charging? And so again, I really wanted to thank City of Kenmore staff for partnering with us to make the workplace charging at City Hall happen. We tried to pick that conversation up as quickly as possible after COVID, put that on hold for a little bit. So next slide, please. And, you know, I also wanted to touch a little bit on CETA. You know, Puget Sound Energy is working hard to build a cleaner energy future together with our customers. In the Northwest, we are the largest utility owner of wind. You'll see in my virtual background there, images of Puget Sound Energy's Wild Horse facility. And, you know, Puget Sound Energy supported what's known as CETA, the Clean Energy Transformation Act. And so you'll see there various milestones by 2025 where coal will be out of rates, 80% emissions-free generation, carbon neutral electricity by 2030. And then by 2040, 2045, carbon-free energy delivery. And over the last, you know, several months, you know, Puget Sound Energy has worked hard to continue meeting the provisions of CETA. And we announced a couple of power purchase agreements. One with the Bonneville Power Administration, and then also with Avengrid, developer of renewable energy projects for a wind farm in Oregon. And so, you know, short story being that, you know, energy doesn't necessarily know state boundaries. And so we think we're really excited about that project. And then we're also going through the rulemaking process associated with that landmark legislation. Next slide, please. And again, it wouldn't be a PSE presentation without encouraging our customers to be safe and prepared. And then I also wanted to touch on bill payment assistance, just given, you know, how we are in the midst of this pandemic and how, you know, certainly, we heard a little bit about it during the discussion of the proclamation about assisting our customers here. So again, ju- just those are some quick pointers in terms of getting prepared for storm season. And then, you know, make sure you're keeping up to date on outages via our outage map. You can report outages that way. And then also staying up to date with us via social media as well, Facebook, Twitter, Flickr, and then also on our YouTube page. You know, I also know this is something that matters a great deal to the City of Kenmore, which is to help our neighbors in need. And over the last several months, Puget Sound Energy, through our existing bill payment assistance programs, this is our PSE Help, the federally funded LIHE program. You know, but we also took steps to generate a new program, which is known as KCAP, which is the Crisis Affected Customer Assistance Program. This was specifically designed for customers who were either out of work, had reduced work, or had someone in the household lose work. And so combined with our existing bill payment assistance programs, we've distributed close to $10 million to our customers throughout our service territory. And, you know, we're always looking for, you know, elected officials to leverage their social media networks, City of Kenmore to utilize its, you know, distribution network, whether it's newsletters or other information, to share information about available assistance programs. And, you know, certainly, PSE was one of the first utilities, in fact, before the governor's proclamation to, you know, stop any disconnections related to non-payment. We also worked with the UTC early on to receive a waiver so that we could waive interest in late fees. And now, you know, we are working, given the UTC's recent announcement, you know, certainly, we are not going to be disconnecting customers for non-payment until April 30th, 2021. Are going to be waiving deposits for new customers and all late fees through October 27th of 2021. Will also be working with our customers to establish long-term payment arrangements for up to 18 months for residential customers and 12 months for small commercial customers. And then in addition to payment arrangements, utilities like Puget Sound Energy will create a COVID-19 bill payment assistance program funded at 1% of our Washington State retail revenues, in addition to any existing local and federal assistance programs. So with that, I think we are wrapped and happy to take any questions now or answer them after the meeting. But thank you again for this opportunity. Really appreciate the partnership with City of Kenmore, Mayor Baker, Deputy Mayor Herbig, council members, and of course, city staff, Rob, Nancy, Jennifer, Dawn, and others.
Thank you, Julian. It's been a pleasure working with you over the past number of years in the various roles you've had. You've always been very, very good to Kenmore, and I certainly appreciate your involvement with our city. Questions? Councilmember file.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Personally, I want to thank Puget Sound Energy for their work and improvement on Circuit 26. I live on Circuit 26 with many others of our community. And so that improvement has been a huge improvement in quality of life and living. And let alone the, the loss families experience when their groceries go bad and they have to replace groceries. Not everybody's in the same situation to, to do that so freely. But noticeably, that same circuit has a lot of power fluctuation and something that causes quite a bit of disruption. So I hope that whatever work is continuing to be done, that improvement contain, continue there. And there was also, there's an issue with recent work. When moving power poles, there was a split pole that went down. And I'm concerned about our community's safety and the quality of your work you do for our community when you're maintaining your product and moving lines. We need to be able to trust and have faith in you for our community. How do you check and test your, your product before you put it in? And was that an unusual circumstance? Or can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yeah. So council member, thank you again for your comments. We'll definitely investigate the power fluctuation issue. Regarding the issue of the pole from, I believe now it's close to a couple of months ago, you know, that was very much a situation where we had installed a new pole. And what should have happened next, and very quickly after that, was the installation of a new guy wire system for that particular pole. And so those are the wires you see coming from the pole, anchoring into the ground. And we had fully intended to install that new guy wire system. However, the incident happened before we could do that. We've altered our construction protocols so that that happens in a more efficient and timely manner. So certainly know that was a bit of concern. I had communicated about that with I had communicated about that with Nancy and absolutely just wanted to share details about that particular occurrence.
And I had one last question for you. In relation to our Kenmore Park and Ride, we have a parking garage improvement project to cover down in the future here. And it seems to be, I don't know if my fellow council members would agree or not, that it might be a good spot for additional electric charging stations for vehicles. Just want to put that out there.
Sure, no, absolutely. Puget Sound Energy is partnered closely with King County Metro. You know, we've installed charging at their, at the East Gate Park and Ride, and then also at their Bellevue base. And certainly, as fast as Metro wants to go to electrify its fleet, we are ready to help and stand ready. So that could include a new base in South King County, increased upgrades at their existing sites. On a quarterly basis, Puget Sound Energy meets with King County Metro to talk about its vehicle electrification of its fleet and then also its park and ride facilities. I think we've talked about this very concept. We've, you know, heard the idea that, you know, do you want just someone to drive up, plug in? And then in the, you know, again, the before times, pre-COVID times, you know, folks would just be at their job for eight hours and then come back at the end of the day. Or do you want it to get that sort of turnover and cycling through? And so this is a reminder, we're due to check in with Metro. We'll certainly bring this up with them. But it's certainly something that we look at and, you know, we'll continue to stay in touch with Metro and, you know, I'll specifically mention this one here.
Thank you.
It needs to be sound transit because sound transit's putting in a new parking facility.
Got it.
All right.
Well, I want to thank the PSC team for the presentation. And remember, this is an annual event now, just like a birthday. So and really appreciate having, you know, the type of dialogue and frequent contact that we have with Puget Sound Energy. So thank you and thank you, council, for your support of the new franchise agreement and MOA.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Ms. Housley, for your diligence on this and making this all come to fruition for us. It was your efforts that pulled this through, so thank you very much.
All right, Nancy. All right. Good evening.
Thank you very much, June. Thank you. Thanks, PSC. How about we take five minutes? Because we're going to be going into some figures and some pretty hot and heavy stuff. So let's take five and then we'll come back and start in on budget issues.
Thank you, Mayor Baker.
You're working late tonight, boss. He's muted.
You talking to me? I'm not muted.
You're working late tonight.
It's a typical Monday night.
Sometimes you work from the comfort of your office at home, don't you?
I'm doing my part to slow the spread, yeah.
There you go. We appreciate that.
Clearing my throat.
And we're all coming back. We got one more to go. All right. Let's bring this meeting back to order again. And the next item on our agenda is the City Manager's Budget Message for 21 through 22. Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor Baker and members of the City Council. I tried to order up a drum roll, but I couldn't figure that out. Thank you. Anyways, this is an exciting part of the meeting tonight. Not that the other parts were not exciting, but this is kind of a big deal because tonight is the kickoff for your discussions and deliberations pertaining to the 2021-2022 biennial budget. Last week, you were given an estimate of revenues and expenditures. That met a statutory requirement. But now what you have before you is the full budget, all 300-plus pages of it in its full glory. What we'll do is I'll turn the time over to Joanne to give you an overview of the budget and how it's organized. And then she'll turn the time back over to me to go over the budget letter.
Ready for that?
We're ready.
Okay, great, great. Let me pop it up on my screen. So good evening from me as well. So the 2021-2022 preliminary biennial budget book has now been made available to you. And I'm going to just run you through the layout of the budget book, which is similar to prior years, but new to council members' file and okaying. We won't be going into a lot of numbers tonight, although the budget message presented by your city manager will contain many, many numbers that you'll see later in the budget book. So the budget includes the planning and the legal authority to obligate public funds. It's a policy direction by the City Council to the administrative organization. And every budget should provide four functions. First, it should be a policy document that reflects the principles and plans that guide our future actions. The budget should be an organizational guide that addresses the day-to-day activities and costs for operations and capital projects. The budget should also be a communication device that encourages public review of city operations and the activities of the city and the reason or causes for those activities and how they have a direct relationship to the community. And finally, the budget is a financial planning tool. Preparing and adopting a budget is a state law requirement of all cities, and a balanced budget must be adopted prior to the expenditure of any city funds. The Kenmore City Budget has traditionally achieved all four functions. And that being said, of course, we are always open to comments and recommendations to continue to improve its usefulness. Going to pretty quickly just walk you through the organization of the budget so that you can see the layout and understand where things are. So the introductory section contains the budget message by the city manager. It's a comprehensive overview of the state of the city and the conditions, challenges, goals, and initiatives that influence the formation of the budget. The budget message is first and foremost in the budget book, and it begins on page three. I'm going to have to flip back and forth here between my screens. This is where the budget message starts. Then the next section is the city profile. And this begins on page 29. And the city profile just provides some background information about the city, missions, goals, values, et cetera. The budget guide on page 42 is more specific discussion of the process, the timing, and the policies that affect the budget. The executive summary begins on page 60. And this provides an understanding of what assumptions were used in development of the operating budget. It includes data on the results of the priority-based budgeting process. On page 83 begins the operating budgets, the section that presents all the general fund revenues and expenditures, first in summary, and then broken down by the various cost centers or departments contained in the general fund and provided for from non-restricted revenues. This includes all of the city departments from the City Council Department Cost Center through the Public Works Maintenance Cost Center. Oh, I must have typed something wrong. Let's see. After that follows the section for all of the other funds. This section begins on page 131 and presents the 18 other city funds, which include all the special revenue funds, the debt service fund, several capital funds, plus the resources that fund those capital project funds, the surface water enterprise funds, and the equipment replacement internal service funds. The next section is the capital program section. This is the section, which is essentially a presentation of the six-year capital improvement program that was just adopted and which will set the 2021 and 2022 budgets, the capital projects and the capital revenue funds, such as real estate excise tax and impact fees. And then lastly, is the appendix, the final section of the budget book, which contains items that might be of interest to the reader, such as the budget adoption ordinances, the most current fee resolution, investment policy, et cetera. And prior to the, to the finalization of the book, after the adoption of the budget, I think the Financial Sustainability Plan, which may be adopted by the council later this month, could be inserted in here as long as the, as well as the long-range forecast, although they're not currently included. They, this would be a good spot to put them in the final budget book after budget adoption. So that is how the budget book is organized. And unless there are any questions, I'll turn the conversation back over to Rob to introduce his budget message. Thank you.
Any questions? Can't see any. City Manager.
Hey, thank you, Your Honor and City Council. I'm going to go ahead and read sections of this budget message. It's 25 pages long, single-spaced. So I don't intend to read all of it tonight, but I do intend to read quite a bit of it. So I encourage you all, including members of the public, to get comfortable and pretend somebody's reading a story to you right now. So it starts here on page four, and you're welcome to follow along in the budget. Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council, we are pleased to present the proposed biennial budget for the years 2021 and 2022. Once again, this budget is packed with incredible plans and resources to continue propelling Kenmore upward on the trajectory of becoming a thriving community where people love where they live. My budget message of two years ago reflected on the first 20 years of cityhood, how much had been accomplished and how we looked forward to Kenmore's next 20 years with great anticipation and excitement. We had and still have ambitious goals to look forward to. And I noted that we had our work cut out for us. Little did I know back then what 2020 would bring. The year 2020 has unfolded like no other. The effects of the pandemic has changed us forever. And this year's public outcry against systemic racism has made a major impact across our nation and right here in Kenmore. Despite the upheaval and surprises of 2020, the people of this organization still managed to accomplish a great deal. We began the year with excitement and optimism for providing important public services and implementing the priorities that you, the City Council, had set out for us. I'm pleased to say that we made great progress towards advancing those priorities, even as we shifted and responded to the events of 2020. So responding to the pandemic was a major workload item that fully consumed us for many weeks, starting in late February. We had to quickly respond to the needs of the public while on the fly, reinventing how we got work done as we protect. We had to quickly respond to the needs of the public while on the fly reinventing how we got worked on as we protected our coworkers from the possibilities of infection and did our part to help slow the spread. We ascended a steep learning curve and our organization was nimble as we changed the way we worked and interacted. And as the pandemic was unfolding, we created a plan of action with a purpose statement and objectives. And that was to lead and support employees in the community through the social, mental, health, and economic impacts of the pandemic. And um, the, the objectives are there, uh, as you can see on the top of page four. My coworkers have been ma- amazing throughout this pandemic as city hall has been closed to the public under the governor's directive. Office employees have been working from home and I'm pleasantly surprised how productive everybody is. I'm grateful for the technology that allowed us to communicate and get work done. And online video meetings like this one have been a great success and critical to our success. Our employees performing maintenance and inspections on the front lines have been very courageous and very adaptable as we installed new precautions and protocols to keep them safe in the field. We also were fortunate to receive federal cares act dollars and that's also been a big, big task. Thank you for providing the direction on how to distribute this much-needed funding to the community. And it already has done some good in the community, including helping our local businesses and those who are behind in their rent and, and supplies for students and things like that. As the date of, as of the date of this writing, no employees have tested positive for COVID nineteen. And I believe that's still true today. While I'm grateful for that, I'm sad for the families of the nine Kenmore residents who have died from the virus. And we're all hurting for those who have been suffering from the economic and other effects of the pandemic. But our residents have nicely pulled together and they've done their part. For example, Kenmore was early in adopting a face covering directive and our residents quickly rallied around wearing masks and getting them distributed throughout the community. And you know how I love the love notes that uh, Peter Kagayama uh, coined. Countless pandemic love notes have been created as the wonderful people of Kenmore have creatively and quietly served, contributed and volunteered. For example, back when masks harder to come by, many Kenmore residents donated their time and materials to sew masks and distribute them freely. Um, also just recently, local Kenmore residents provided rock painting kits to go with masks that were distributed here at city hall. About two months into the pandemic, op-ed columnist David Brooks said, "The pandemic has reminded us of our interdependence and the need for a strong and effective government." "It's also taken us to a deeper level." "The polarization over the past decades has required constant volleys of dehumanization." "This dehumanization has always been a bit of a mirage." "The pandemic has been a massive humanizing force, allowing us to see each other on a level much deeper than politics. See the fragility, the fear, and the courage." "I think we've all seen this humanizing force play out over the last nine months. Think of how many families have suffered together as residents assisted residents of assisted living facilities have had to live in physical isolation from their families and friends." Or how many of our senior citizens have had to shelter in place in their homes, magnifying the loneliness that was already there? Or how a family member was hospitalized by the virus and could have no visitors or spare that came with job loss and delinquent rent and worst of all, loved ones who have fallen to the virus. Yet despite this suffering, people have come together and united in countless and quiet ways. For example, some of my coworkers organized a note-writing effort to the residents of our assisted living facilities. And I'm sure they made a few people smile that day. I believe the panic, the pandemic will persist well into twenty twenty-one and the effect will be felt in twenty twenty-two and beyond. Only a small fraction of Kenmore's and the state's population has tested positive for COVID nineteen. In addition, a vaccine will not be available for a while. From what I'm reading, a reliable vaccine may not be available until spring or summer of twenty twenty-one. And then there will need to be time for the vaccine to be distributed into the population. So the low number of confirmed cases combined with a vaccine not being available soon caused me to conclude that we're going to be in the state of tailworking, various stage stages of closures, physical distancing, and other precautions for a long time. Nevertheless, if the past nine months is any indication of the future, the humanizing force of the pandemic will continue as we pull together and help those in need. If that happens, we will continue to come out better and stronger on the other end. Towards the bottom of page five, I do want to spend some time on this next topic. Systemic racism, racial equity, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Not only did the pandemic rock our world in twenty twenty, but so did the murder of George Floyd and the public outcry against systemic and institutional racism that has been mounting for years. But hopefully this call for action and the resulting steps we take will not just rock our world, but will change our world, our systems, and us for the better. Kenmore is not immune to racial inequity and disparity. Our Hispanic residents are twice as likely to live below the poverty line as our white residents and black residents in Kenmore are five times more likely. Educational attainment and other demographic measures for Kenmore till tell a similar story. And what I just read this paragraph about these statistics, this is Kenmore data. This isn't King County. But speaking of King County, for King County, income for black households is fifty-two percent of white households and Hispanic households bring in about third less than white households. Trends show that the number of children below the poverty line is growing dramatically in King County with children of color bearing the disproportionate brunt of that trend. About forty-six percent of black children in King County are below the poverty level, seven times the rate for white children. Health, education, and other indicators point to similar demographic trends in King County. But this is more than, this is more than about statistics and numbers. Qualitatively, we know there is much hurt, anger, frustration, and despair among too many of our sisters and brothers who are black indigenous and people of color. These feelings are justified and are not new. The most recent social unrest and protests once again bring this issue to the forefront and hopefully motivate all of us to move, to act, to change. Such action and change can take place right here in Kenmore. We do not need to wait for a national or regional conversation or strategy. We can start right here at home. But any conversations we have and actions we must take must not be superficial. It's not just about changing our attitude. It's about dismantling systemic racism throughout the complex and entrenched social, political, and economic systems that bias in favor of white people. To go below the surface and change the machine, we need to take intentional ownership of what's happened. We should historicize Kenmore and we must be willing to dig deep, to be vulnerable, to be humble, and to own up to our own history. We have to honestly ask and answer tough questions that will make us uncomfortable and make us more aware. And we have to create a safe, inclusive space for people of color and other marginalized groups to ask the tough questions and tell us what they've gone through and to be able to do so and truly feel heard and understood, not interrupted, not ignored. In her book, So You Want to Talk About Race, Igioma Aluo said, "We have a real problem of racial inequity and injustice in our, in our society and we cannot wish it away. We have to tackle this problem with real action and we will not know what needs to be done if we are not willing to talk about it." Aluo goes on to say that these conversations will always be hard because they will always be about the hurt and pain of real people. And if you are white and you don't want to feel any of that pain by having these conversations, then you are asking people of color to continue to bear the entire burden of racism alone. Under your leadership and direction, we as a community can go on this journey of uncomfortable conversations and meaningful action. Hopefully, along the way, we'll learn a lot, such as ways we unknowingly make race an issue, deep down what our implicit biases might be, an awakening to, an awakening to microaggressions and the damage they do. What is intersectionality and how this more inclusive view casts a wider umbrella? And what specifically can we do to truly move the needle in Kenmore? To truly alter the machinery of societal systems laced with policies and practices that maintain barriers for people of color and keeps in place a racial caste system that too few want to acknowledge or talk about, but is alive and well. Make sure to refer to that footnote there. Much of that um, is from Michelle Alexander, um, author of the, the New Jim Crow that was written about ten years ago. But what can little old Kenmore do to make real progress on this societal issue? Isn't it national or even global in scope and therefore shouldn't we leave it to larger institutions such as Congress or the US Supreme Court to solve? Actually, there are things we can do at the local level. We can start with examining our own systems and processes here in the Kenmore organization. Further, real change happens one heart at a time. You can't get any more local than that. And we might be surprised how our actions can ripple over into other communities. The more cities, big and small, that take on this issue, the more momentum will build and the more it will roll up to the state and national levels. Kenmore can make a difference. When approved for funding and resources as proposed in this preliminary budget, in early twenty twenty-one, we will begin the process of developing a racial equity and inclusion policy that honors diversity in our programs and community. As you directed in resolution twenty dash three four eight last month, a proposed plan for this process will be presented to you in early November and this process will include engaging our community and creating a brave space and an atmosphere of trust for people of color and people who have been othered and marginalized to open up and share their lived experiences and struggles. An atmosphere of trust can be created through the process of learning our individual and community identities, how we intercan, how we are interconnected with each other and who we really are. Frenell Miller, founder and CEO of The Root of Us, says, "When we fail to see and understand ourselves, we fail to see and understand each other." And that having accurate knowledge of our roots allows us to use that knowledge to build strong, equitable, inclusive, and diverse communities of practice. The process will tell us how we can own up and be transparent about what's going on now and what truly needs to be changed. And again, we need to go beyond proclamations, public statements, and words on paper. What actionable steps can we take as a community? And take that will produce real deliverables that will help change the system, including Kenmore Systems and Institutions. To me, if this question is at the heart of the matter, sorry, to me, this question is at the heart of the matter and will make the process worth the time and resources if we can answer it. I'm looking forward to this process. I know it's going to be hard and at times painful, but I believe that it will result in positive and long overdue changes that we all deserve, especially for those in our community who have been othered and discriminated against and marginalized for far too long. Later in this letter, there will be more details on what staffing and resources will be allocated to diversity, equity, and inclusion in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. But let me end this section of the budget message by quoting late Congressman John Lewis. "I think there's something brewing in America that's going to bring people closer and closer together. Adversity can breed unity. Hatred can give way to love. We need a leadership of love right now, a strong leadership to lift us, to transport us, to remind us that God's truth is marching on. We can do it. We must do it. We have to go forward as one people, one family, one house. I believe in it. I believe we can do it." So moving on to budget highlights. I'm really pleasantly surprised with how in the first year of this biennium, we will begin um, twenty twenty-one in better financial shape than we forecasted last spring. As major sectors of the economy were closing and as the general population was sheltering in place, we expected significant drops in certain revenues, including permitting fees, sales tax, and fuels tax. That was back last April and March and April. I'm pleased to report that these drops, as predicted, did not materialize. Sales tax is only about, down about four percent um, compared to last year and we thought it might be down as much as twenty-five percent. Permit fees are on par with last year and fuel tax is down about fifteen percent. Again, we thought, we thought that would be down by about fifty-five zero percent. So it's not uh, the drop that we braced for. So to prepare for these drops in revenues, we made um, a bunch of cuts that we went through with you last April and May and these reductions are described later in the table under the Financial Sustainability Plan. It did give us a good head start, though, on this next biennium. We also need to continue to approach the budget and our spending with caution. We do not know the full extent of the, of the financial effects of the pandemic recession. Further, we project that twenty twenty-one will see less revenues than originally budgeted in for twenty twenty. And at the time of this writing, it appears that initiative nine seventy-six, which eliminates vehicle license fee revenue, will be upheld. Although I, I might be proven wrong, I hope I am. I'm cutting more than three hundred and fifty thousand per year from the street fund. In addition, for the next biennium, we are predicting, we are predicting notably lower sales tax, fuel tax, and development services fees than a pre-pandemic scenario would have anticipated. Well, okay, so in light of all this, we believe this next biennium will have the resources to maintain the current services and advance your, the city council's top priorities. And these priorities are as follows, and as you adopted on your consent agenda tonight, we put uh, these two new ones in bullets here, uh, the responding to the pandemic and beginning the process to develop a, a diversity equity inclusion program. And for those of you who are following along, I'm on the bottom of a page eight, top of page nine. And then your um, council goals that you had established in January. Pedestrian bicycle safety is council goal number one, affordable housing number two, climate action plan number three, implementing walkways and waterways projects number four, and number five, implementing a financial sustainability plan. And you can see the, the rest of the goals there on page nine. I am just uh, really thrilled on how um, this organization has rallied around target zero, the pedestrian and bicycle safety initiative. It has been your number one goal since twenty fourteen. And we keep, continue to keep our eye on it. And while it can be next to impossible to prove prevention, I believe your vision, combined with the city's efforts, have made a difference in improving pedestrian and bicycle safety over the last six years. Who knows, maybe lives have been saved. And I would argue that they have. What follows are the descriptions of these um, uh, projects and efforts aimed at target zero. And I won't go over these in detail, but um, I do want to mention that along with the recommendation of the Financial Sustainability Plan Task Force, we're proposing that traffic photo enforcement be a new initiative um, starting probably in about mid twenty twenty-two. Please note that traffic photo enforcement can only be used for red light running and school zone speed enforcement. And that's under Washington state law. Uh, then we have our lo- local road safety plan that we're implementing, new sidewalks and grants for new sidewalks, bike lanes that have been added. The Simons overlay and restripe resulted in what I call road diet, which created more room for cyclists um, or bike lanes. The work um, that's doing on the West Mount River Bridge, including the promenade, that's going to be part of it is going to be amazing. And the continued work And the continued work we do with traffic data collection. Council goal number two, affordable housing. This work has also been substantial and. It makes me smile when I look at all the things you've done in the last year or two and what you're continuing to do. Whether it was the mobile home park preservation, the accessory dwelling units, the work on missing middle that's coming up. The multi-family tax exemption that you installed in the transit over oriented development district overlay. Rent notification regulations. The local sales tax for affordable housing that we're able to capture. And then new work that, that the planning commission is working on now, including the reuse of tax exempt or publicly owned sites for affordable housing. Annual dashboard on housing that we're working with the King County Housing Inter, Inter jurisdictional team. And the work we're doing with that team, arch membership. And. Affordable housing work for the next biennium. Many of these projects that I just listed will continue into this next biennium, including missing middle. Council goal number three, climate action plan. So earlier this year, you approved the plan for the plan. And you gave us the green light for moving forward on phase one of that plan, which is taking an inventory and calculating our greenhouse gas emissions. But you know, I really believe that in order to do a good job with developing and implementing a climate action plan. And have it truly integrated into our organization and be a part of everything we do. We need to have a halftime position. Especially in the context of all the other competing priorities. So therefore, this proposed budget includes such a position and include, it includes funding for a climate action plan consultant expertise as well. We currently have a halftime, or we currently have a temporary position working in environmental services. And we're proposing that half of that position continue working on administrative support in the service water utility. And the other half serve as a specialist in helping us develop the climate action plan. And if you allocate these resources that I'm proposing. Then we'll be able to proceed with the next phases of the climate action plan, including implementation. Council goal number four, walkways and waterways. For the sake of time, I won't cover this in a lot of detail, but just know that we are making progress. And that we are on schedule with these. Some of the projects are over budget. But the good news is I have resourceful coworkers. And they've been amazing. In finding additional funding to keep these projects on track and on schedule. And then the financial sustainability, which Financial Sustainability Plan, which was council goal number five and still is. And we talked about how we needed to have a broader discussion with the community about our structural budget problem. And I'm pleased to report that we followed through with that and we've had that very discussion with the community this year. Late last year, you approve, you approved a public process. By which we engaged the community. You approved a charter for a task force and we got that task force going. They were well on their way, making great progress, but then the pandemic happened, so they took a hiatus. But last August, we got them back together again and they continued with their meetings and by the end of August, they had. A proposed financial sustainability plan that they proposed to you at the September tenth. Budget retreat. This process included engaging the public, not just the task force, but the public, and we did that with. Public meetings and open houses and also that balancing act tool. That gave the public a way to create their own budget and make their own cuts. And we got tons of just great information out of that. The Financial Sustainability Plan, as recommended by the task force. Will be a measured and phased approach with specific actions being implemented sequentially over several years. The plan will include both reductions in expenditures and increases in revenues. Expenditure reductions will be implemented first before revenue increases and many of these expenditure cuts went into effect in 2020. And others will be implemented in 2021. Many of these reductions represented or represent drops in service levels such as economic development, federal and regional advocacy. Landscape maintenance on our arterials and decorative banners and flower baskets also along our arterials. The Kenmore Business Incubator is among the cuts in the economic, in economic development and will close its doors at the end of the year. Or at least city involvement will end at the end of this year. The Kenmore Business Incubator has helped many businesses representing dozens, if not hundreds of jobs during this eight year run. And I want to thank Assistant City Manager Nancy Ausley for her outstanding work in creating and running the Kenmore Business Incubator. We're also going to see decreases in public safety expenditures, especially jail and court. And. Those. Those reductions in jail record and court reflect both the shift in how we approach policing. As well as changes in misdemeanor crime laws and how they are prosecuted. So. The, the, the table that you see on page sixteen, top of page sixteen summarizes. The cuts that we. We made this year and that will continue into the next biennium. And savings per year is going to be about six hundred and fifty thousand a year. Again, those cuts, a lot of these cuts were not easy to make. They represent service level reductions. But given council priorities and other competing factors. We think it's the right do, right thing to do at this point. So like I said, there's not only expenditure cuts that go with this, this financial sustainability plan, but there's going to be some revenue increases. The task force recommends that a new cable TV utility tax of six percent. Get underway starting in mid 2022. And. We're also looking to use a little bit of real estate excise tax for operations. There was a recent change in state law that allows that to happen. As you know. Real estate X size tax, most of it. Is required to be spent on capital improvement projects. So back to the topic of diversity, equity and inclusion and human resources. You have directed us to move forward with a DEI policy and program for 2021. And we, kind of like climate action plan, we need the appropriate amount of resources to be allocated to this endeavor. And responsible, responsibility for diversity, equity, inclusion. Will not be concentrated in one person or department. It will be everyone's job to advance equity and justice. That said, we will need some outside expertise to help guide us through the conversation. And I will need a point person on staff to run and coordinate diversity, equity, inclusion. This budget allocates funding for a consultant to provide us with the expertise and guidance we need for diversity, equity, inclusion. Program development and implementation. We'll also need internal staff resources to drive this initiative and I'm proposing. That we create a human resources manager position to manage the DEI process. And take on the ever growing workload of human resources management for our city organization. As you know, we all wear various hats in our small organization. Our finance and administration director not only manages all aspects of our city finances, but she also manages our human resources. Information technology and risk management functions. The human resources responsibility in particular has ballooned over the years. This phenomenon has less to do with the number of our employees and more to do with the ever changing rules and regulations pertaining to personnel. Neither finance nor human resources can be neglected. All sorts of bad things happen when one or both don't get their due. And we can no longer stretch one person's time to manage these functions. With the added workload of the important DEI initiative, it is time to create a position with the time and expertise. To handle these HR functions and DI, DEI work. And below are some key proposed functions of a human resources manager position. And these are things that need to get done. Are important to the health of any organization. You can find these, this long list on page seventeen. So as you can see from this list, managing HR is no small chore. And we need to give it, give this function the necessary resources for the benefit of our organization. Doing so can yield significant benefits. A more engaged workforce, reduction of risk and improved processes, to name a few. And funding for the DEI consultant services is proposed to be allocated from the Strategic Opportunities Fund. And the general fund will cover the cost of the human resources position. So other highlights, bottom of page seventeen, other highlights for the proposed 2021, 22 budget. Industrial emissions and air quality. Many of our residents have concerns about industrial emissions from the asphalt plant. And it's currently under a forty plus year old EPA permit that does not require emission standards, standards or testing. To Sound Clean Air Agency has jurisdiction over emissions regulations and enforcement. And a current enforcement action by PSCAA may result in requiring the plant to comply with emission standards and testing. City needs to play an active role in tracking the situation, asking the right questions and looking out for the public's interests. This proposed budget includes funding from the Strategic Opportunities Fund to pay for the engineering and legal expertise necessary. For the city to stay ta, on top of the situation. Also, Public Works Facility. We continue to be on the hunt for a property. Kenmore's Public Works Department maintains the city's essential infrastructure. And we need to have a good, adequate, long-term site to, to do that work correctly. And give it the resources that it needs. Public Works does not have a special interest group to stand up and fight for it. That's where the Kenmore City Council and staff come in. It is up to us to be that voice for the greater good of the Ken, people of Kenmore. And we should persist in searching for and acquiring the right property for Public Works. So we'll continue to our search for that site and I'm grateful for an informal city council subcommittee. Who's helping us revise the site selection criteria. And I expect we'll have that criteria updated for you in the first quarter of 2021. On the topic of policing. Immediately following the George, the murder of George Floyd, you directed us to employ the process recommended by the Obama Foundation Mayor's pledge. As a commitment to action regarding the use of force policies. As part of this pledge, the mayor and the council pledged to, number one, review your use of force policies. Number two, engage your community by including a diverse range of input, experiences and stories in your review. Number three, report the findings of review, review to the, to the community and seek feedback. And reform your community's police use of force policies. So without delay, we held two listening sessions with the public invited and invited King County Sheriff. Joe Hanknick and Chief Mo into a city council meeting to discuss use of force policies and hear additional feedback from the public. Based on these listening sessions and meetings, Chief Moan produced a report. That he presented to you on September fourteenth and it included recommendations at the local county and state levels. That did not close or end the process. This process is not over. We need to move forward with recommendations that were in that report. And we also need to continue to engage. The community and build the trust with our BIPOC communities. So that they'll feel safe enough to open up and help us understand what they're going through and what needs to change. This work will be at the heart, will be part of and can, and coordinate with our community wide diversity, equity and inclusion work that I outlined earlier. So in keeping with the task force recommendation, this budget. Discontinues funding for a school resource officer. And replaces it just about dollar for dollar with funding to supplement the radar program, which provides mental health professionals. To respond to calls with police officers and provide the necessary follow up. This next section on traffic safety and pavement preservation, we have a good pavement rating. But we need to continue to invest dollars into our roads so that we don't. Fall down the slippery slope of deferred maintenance. And you see footnote thirteen there on. Top page nineteen, I got a little postscript about deferred maintenance when it comes to our roads. So we're proposing to address both traffic safety and preservation of pavement with. Traffic photo enforcement. The, the task force recognized the safety benefits of photo enforcement, but they also recog, recognize photo enforcement as a mechanism. To not only fund traffic safety and pavement preservation. But also as a way for road users who don't live in Kenmore to help pay for the costs of maintaining our transportation systems. And then I talk about how we're a bedroom community and a lot of our taxes go out of our community. And while this doesn't. Totally, you know, replace that or address it. This is one way of capturing dollars from the outside of the community. So if you, the city council, give us the green light. To move forward with photo enforcement, we expect that the equipment will be installed and operational by mid 2022. Assuming three photo enforcement locations. Half of operations would conservatively yield about a net of about five hundred thousand in the first year, first half year. Our consultant for the Financial Sustainability Task Force predicted more, but to be conservative, I had it at five, five hundred thousand. We're also needing additional administrative support in development services and, and we're proposing a halftime. Administrative assistant increase in that department. And this explains, the next couple pages explain in details the rationale for that. Also on rec, recreation coordination. You established a new halftime position for this current biennium that we're in. And it's been a great addition. The person in that position has just done great work and has really. Unified and made more professional the city's interaction with recreation services. So. We're recommending that that halftime position continue. Also, we're going to be dealing with an unfunded mandate residential streetlights. I'm at the bottom of page twenty two. There was a Supreme Court ruling that said that residents can't be billed directly for streetlights. And so we actually need to take that. And absorb that back into the general fund rather than having North Shore Utility District bill people for. Residential streetlights and that's going to be about two hundred thousand dollars a year that we have to absorb into the general fund. If you combine that new burden with a loss of I nine seventy six revenues. Then that's a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar problem. That we have to deal with amidst everything else that's going on. Not to whine too much or complain, but just to kind of point that out. Okay, so top of page twenty three, Lake Point. So would be developers seem to come and go and they've done it many times over the years. But rather than the definition of insanity, which is, you know, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. We should consider rethinking Lake Point. After several decades of hoping for a developer to swoop in and save the day. Maybe we should look at Lake Point through a new lens. What if this lakefront property was redeveloped with more of a balance of public and private spaces and infrastructure? Like points still on your list of priorities, even though it's kind of dead last, but it's still on your list. So we will work on it as time allows. But we do need to put first things first before we can put too much attention back into Lake Point. Getting our financial house in order in the context of the pandemic. Dressing our part in climate change, confronting systemic racism and your other higher priorities come first. But that said. This proposed budget does include some funding to begin the process to revision length point and amend the compliment comprehensive plan accordingly, if that's what you so, you know, choose to do. Including an environmental impact study and a high level planned use planned land views action to go with it. This funding would at least get that started. Um, the proposed funding source for this effort over the bio name would come from the strategic opportunities fund. And speaking of the strategic opportunities fund. Um, this budget does propose some one time strategic expenditures from the strategic opportunities fund. And this first paragraph here about the strategic opportunities fund on page twenty three gives you a little bit of history of that fund. And how we've replenished it over the years and we've been pretty good at that. But we 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 propose to take a pretty good dent out of it in this next biennium. And you can see on twenty three, page twenty three, the initiatives that we plan to uh, to fund. For out of strategic opportunities fund. Also know that um, we're going to be ending, the general fund is going to be ending with a higher fund balance than we anticipated. About five point one million. And that's about how much was in the general fund when we split two and a half million off of it. To create the strategic opportunities fund. So even though we're depleting strategic opportunities fund, know that your general fund balances at five point one. You could always transfer money from your general fund. And keep strategic opportunities uh, whole and still have a healthy fund balance in the general fund. So let's quickly go over the budget picture. How are you all doing? Is this just the most exciting thing that you've ever done? Just a few more minutes if you can hang in there. So the rest recession aside for a moment, remember I mentioned earlier that we've got to absorb about. A five hundred and fifty thousand dollar problem that makes us go in the wrong direction. But back to the recession, you can see um, twenty nineteen revenues. For three major revenue sources that are especially affected by the pandemic, sales tax permitting revenue and fuel tax. You can see how they're impacted and how we forecast them. But we are proposing a budget that is in keeping with the task force recommendations for a budget that is mostly balanced for the next biennium. What do I mean by mostly balanced? Well, thanks to the service level cuts we made earlier this year in response to the pandemic. And given that many of these reductions will continue into the next biennium. We will be able to balance out most of the negative impacts from the recession and the state imposed hits to the budget. But the task force recognized. The ongoing recession and the desire not to impose new revenues during these difficult times. So they were willing to um, spend from the city reserves a little bit in this next biennium. And so are um. Our proposed budget does that. We um, the the general fund is completely balanced. But we uh, plan to um, dip into street fund reserves by about a hundred and seventy thousand in twenty twenty one. About ninety one thousand in twenty twenty two. And like I said, the task force was willing to accept um. Doing this dipping into reserves. Knowing that number one, we have a very healthy fund. We have very healthy fund balances to begin with to draw from. And that in future phases. Their plan would uh, phase in other budget balancing measure measures. And thereby restore any draws on fund balance taken during this next biennium. So this proposed budget follows that direction of the task force. And also note that we're not, we're not for those unfunded mandates that I mentioned earlier. The streetlights and I nine seventy six revenue lost. We would have a fully balanced budget. So um. And and uh, looking on page twenty four there, you can see the combined general fund and street fund balances six point four million. At the beginning of the biennium and six point two at the end of the biennium. And so that we we anticipate that collectively operating revenues will remain flat in the next biennium compared to twenty twenty. And this forecast is what I call a middle of the road approach. Meaning that we're not expecting the economy to bounce back quickly, nor are we expecting it to to decline and fall off a cliff. Sharply. Um, so there's compelling argument arguments for both sides, whether we, you know, stay flat or we fall off a cliff. But I do believe that our revenue projections are prudent. We are seeing troubling economic indicators on the macro level such as drops in. Gross domestic product and unemployment and consumer confidence. Small business closures. But on the other hand, we're seeing pretty stable city revenues. And we're experiencing encouraging indicators. Such as um, consumer spending, real estate price stability and new construction activity. And like I said, our own revenues are also remaining steady. So we will continue to monitor economic indicators in the city revenue collections closely and frequently. And we can respond and make adjustments as necessary. And overall, I believe that Kenmore is in a good financial position to weather this storm because three reasons. Number one, the city has strong fund balances, like I mentioned. Number two, our major revenue sources are relatively in elastic. The big, the biggest example of that is property tax. And last but not least. The reductions we made earlier this year are significant. And many of those reductions are helping us into this next biennium and will continue into the next biennium. So in conclusion, number one, I'm just really excited about what's in the budget. And all the great things we're going to be able to accomplish if you approve these resources and these priorities. And I also believe that we are at another hinge point in our nation's history. And this next biennium budget can play a role in that and we can be part of that hinge point. The civil rights era of the nineteen sixties, including the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four. And the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty five was one of those hinge points. Multiple forces are converging together to create this hinge point. Give us great pause. Inject a dose of humility and cause us to assess who we are and where we need to go. Such forces include the pandemic, the public outcry against systemic racism. And the effects of climate change. How will Kenmore play a contributing role in this hinge point? As small as we are, we can make a difference, even if it's only for our twenty four thousand residents. For years, we've talked about how Kenmore is on an upward trajectory of becoming. You've heard me talk about that and how we do that through relentless incrementalism. Well, I think my view of that upward trajectory and how it's going to happen has evolved. Kenmore can go to a new level on this trajectory. Perhaps even to a level that is an order of magnitude higher. So far, ascending this upward trajectory has been propelled by our amazing programs and projects such as creating a new downtown. Beautification, building new sidewalks, habitat restoration and water quality programs and improving public safety and traffic safety. We are also focused on climate change, affordable housing. And partnering with our community co creators who produce what we call love notes that bring people together and create art, beauty and fun. All of these efforts are very important and meaningful, and we should continue them. Because they will continue to propel us on that upward trajectory. And I also believe there's a next level in our progression. And I think this level will take us beyond the purely financial. Or things that can that we can objectively put a finger on. A level that per that helps us acquire or improve upon higher attributes. Such as sympathy, empathy, love and compassion. Earlier in this letter, I quoted David Brooks and his idea of seeing each other on a level much deeper than politics. He expounded on this idea at a university forum in twenty nineteen. Many of our society's great problems flow from people not feeling seen and known. To me, the core democratic trait that we all need to get a little better at. Is the trait of seeing each other deeply and being deeply seen. It's a question of understanding each other. I believe the diversity, equity and inclusion work and funding included in this budget. Must include this idea of seeing each other deeply and being deeply seen. This concept, if we can practice it, will prove extreme extremely helpful. As we combat racial inequity and the machine that supports it. As we see each other more deeply. We will drive out fear and in particular fear of losing power or position. Instead, we'll learn that power like love is not a zero sum game. Power gained by one group or person does not mean a corresponding amount of power lost by another group or individual. I have seen this concept of powering of empowering and lifting all. Successfully play out in organizations and I know it can happen in communities. Despite the pandemic and the recession. This proposed budget and the resources and initiatives contained within it. Will allow us to continue to propel Kenmore and our organization to new heights. And this budget, along with our community and organization, will position us well to be on the right side of the special hinge point in history. Like Congressman Lewis. I believe there's something brewing in America and Kenmore. That's going to bring people closer and closer together. Our best days are still ahead of us and I'm thrilled to be on this team and part of this community. In closing, may I suggest adding a new word to our organization's service vision. Propelling Kenmore upward. We create a thriving community where all people love where they live. Thank you for your vision and direction that guided the development of this biennial budget. We look forward to the budget discussions in the weeks ahead. And I just want to point out the acknowledgements here. This has been a team effort. Um, including the entire community of Kenmore, you, the city council, who give us the direction, the vision and the resources. Um, without that, we wouldn't be able to put this budget together. And then my coworkers have just been phenomenal and I'm so grateful for them, including. Our finance and administration director, Joanne Gregory and her team, they've worked long hours to bring this document together. All the while juggling their daily activities. And the work of all the department heads was huge because they gave us that essential. Policy guidance on how best to implement your vision. And then the rest of the organization really came together as they produced the budget narratives and the detail pages. So. Thank you to all of you for helping make the production of this budget possible. We still have a lot of work ahead of us. But so far, it's just been such a neat team effort. It's been been fun to to be a part of. And last but not least, I just want to show this postscript about pavement preservation. It's really important. And I encourage you to take some time to to read this last postscript page. So. That's all I have. Thank you so much, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council. And.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
And we look forward to uh, budget discussions and deliberations starting next week. You're still on mute, Mayor.
We're in that time of year. We got budget discussions from now until the end of the year. All right. Next item on the agenda. Is um. Planning Commission vacancies. Um, Miss Bent.
Good evening, Council. Hopefully this will be a a quick agenda item for you. Um, I'm looking for direction on what you wish to do. For the uh, three planning commission terms that are expiring at the end of this year. And your direction on whether you would like to have open interviews through a. An application process, or if your preference is to appoint. Um, the commissioners whose terms are expiring to another three year term. Um, the last time you held open interviews was in two thousand and eighteen. And you had a pool of four. And in fact, one of the commission terms is expiring commissioner Lutzis was was part of that pool. There are still three people in that pool, and I think your intent was to have. Um, that pool available if any commission term expired before, you know, the three year term. So there are still three people on that list. So that's why I'm looking for direction. If you would like to have an open application process and you could also invite. The um, commissioners whose terms are expiring to also interview if they continue to be interested. And we would also contact the three people in the pool to see if they would also like to be re interviewed as well. So that's all I have to say.
Mrs. Bent, a quick question for you. Is Nathan Lutz is still interested in serving?
I have not asked any of the three commissioners if they're interested or not. I would like to get counsel direction first.
Traditionally, what we've done, those who wanted to continue to serve, we've reappointed. However, it's a new day, so um. What's council's wishes? Councilmember Curtis.
This reminds me of a story that I heard. So there is a garbage truck and he was losing stuff flying out the back. So one of the garbage guy guys got up on top and he laid out to hold all the garbage down. And this little girl and her mom were were looking at this and the girl says, look, they threw away a perfectly good man. And it seems to me. Like if we have citizens who've served us faithfully, they've been vetted already. We should not throw away perfectly good citizens.
Right.
So that's my first point. I would say anybody who wants to keep serving, keep him serving. That it takes a while to get up to speed. So when somebody first comes on, there's a huge amount to learn. How do they interact with staff and consultants? And so to have a well trained person, I think has some value. And then the what we've traditionally done, the people we've already vetted and interviewed, we go back and see if they're still interested. At some point they were interested. At some point we thought they were worth considering. So I would say let's go back and ask them. It's a lot of work to interview a big panel of people. So you citizens who've already shown interest. Um, and then when that pool's expense, uh, you know, used up. Then we go interview a bunch more. We have again the the first team and the reserve team and just keep working through it that way. It's worked well. Um, and I think it's worth considering continuing. Don't throw away those perfectly good people.
Anybody disagree? Councilmember file.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Um, you know, I I really appreciate what our planning commission does for us. Uh, they had really recently a really great conversation on affordable housing in fact. But you know, we have a democratic process for a reason. And if we have committee members who would like to. Return and reapply, I say let them reapply and have a an open democratic process. And here we are, we would not be. Uh, throwing away people, but leaning into the democratic process. And of course, we appreciate the people who have served us so well.
Yeah, let's remember Marshall.
Uh, what what a great anecdote. I would remember the the garbage truck one for a long time. That is absolutely fabulous. I I respectfully. Uh, take the opposite position. I think that wow, what what a time to tap into. The talents of Kenmore and people who might as a uh, maybe a silver lining in this this whole uh. Horrendous year might have some more time freed up in order to serve. I I say let's tap into the talent of Kenmore. Our own resources, uh, that is our community, uh, that we can open this up. And then also I think the spirit of. Of competition really uh, loosen things up and can create a, you know, a talent pool. That'll be of great benefit. So I'm all for uh, giving those interviews.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Uh, I would concur with the the comments that have just been made recently that I I. I feel like, you know, if folks want to retain their position, they can apply, I mean, sort of like. If folks want to retain their position, they can apply, I mean, sort of like. Councilmembers that want to continue, they run again. I mean, it, it, you know, obviously it's, it's not an election, they are appointed, so it's, it's different that way, but. I, you know, I, it, it, it kind of feels like a closed system if we don't allow other people to at least apply. So that's where I'd land as well.
Deputy Mayor.
I came in thinking, I came in agreeing with Councilmember Curtis and I'm leaving agreeing with Councilmember Shrubnik and. And Marshall and file on this actually, so yeah, let's open it up. I mean, we may, there's a good chance we end up. Appointing some of the same people because of the experience and because frankly, it's always difficult to find good folks. Who are willing to apply and put in the time, but you never know, right now might be the right time to to open up the gates and. See if somebody great comes through, so.
Yeah, there's at least a year's learning curve there, so Councilmember O'Keane.
Well, I, I think a fair and open selection process is important and I encourage our current. Planning commissioners to apply. I, I really do think it's important. People are starting to get engaged in a new way in local government and opening the door for people to explore the opportunities incredibly important. Along with allaying fears of cronyism and, you know, that sort of thing. So I, I really think that it's important to open the door and may the best people. Be appointed.
So. Miss Community Development Director. I think we've heard from everybody and you should have direction.
Yes, I think apart from you, Mayor, I think right now I'm counting. One person which is Councilmember Curtis to keep the current members. And the other five members of the council are agreeing to open it up, so I think that is a majority to have.
My vote, vote in this point is superfluous, so let's go ahead and open it up.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
All right. Staff report, Mr. City Manager.
Well, you've heard from me enough tonight, but just one quick thing. The, you know, the governor extended his proclamations, including the, the prohibition on evictions. Luckily and smartly by our city attorney, our proclamations are designed to just automatically extend with the governor's proclamations. And so we don't have to take any action and our proclamations, including our own eviction moratoria. Will extend through twelve thirty one like the governors and we'll put out an announcement about that.
All right, council comments and reports. Councilmember O'Keane, Mr. City Manager.
Oh, I just seeing a note from our city clerk. So we were going to have a presentation from the fire district on the next week, on the nineteenth of October. But because of some scheduling issues, they're proposing to have that presentation on November second. So that's all I have.
All right. Councilmember O'Keane.
I, I just want to. And our city manager and staff for the work on the budget preparation. But in particular, I just have to say, I don't think I've ever been so moved by a budget presentation in my entire life. Your real true consideration of the importance of equity and inclusion. The broad systemic approach that opens the door to our community and us raising the bar, recognizing that each one of us makes a difference. The heart that goes into that and what we can be as a city of Kenmore, when we recognize the value. That each one of us brings to the table. I just have to say, I, I just was so impressed and I thank you. I really thank you for what you had to say there. I also want to thank you for including a half position towards a, a climate and sustainability, so. But really, Rob, I was blown away and I'm sure other people have been too. I've been very impressed with your study and. The heart that you put into your leadership and it shows with the great work of your team. They know where they're going. They know where they're going, moving upward, right? Where, where, where we all are on an upward trajectory and love where we live. Thank you. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for an amazing presentation and also all staff tonight that presented. And also Assistant City Manager Nancy Ausley for that first follow up. Wow, what an amazing achievement after, you know, she started off and, and we all start off with that with. The work that went in with. Good sound energy and, and all that work and all those times. So it's great to be at this point. I just wanted to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day and acknowledge my great privilege in. My friends from elementary school and through high school. And in college and my colleagues and fellow law students and colleagues in the. The, the Washington State Bar Association and beyond and two very dear family members who are Native Americans. I'm grateful for all of them. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
So I have a special request. Those nice council chairs that we purchased as a city that sit there not being used. They're designed to sit in for four to five hours, but this old junker hand me down that I sit in is not. So I was wondering if during the coronavirus, we could have those chairs allocated to the houses of those who need them. And we promise to return them when coronavirus is done.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I, I can check on that, but I'm pretty sure we can do that. We're, we used coronavirus relief funds to. Purchase desk chairs for office workers at home. So I think in this case, we wouldn't even be doing that. You'd just be borrowing the chairs.
Right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double check with those who know this stuff better than me, but if it's not an audit issue, let's go for it.
Good, thank you very much. Councilmember Shrubnik.
Well, I think many of us have, or many of you have already used superlatives to describe tonight's presentation. I'll choose a new one, stupendous. It was great. At many levels. And I also want to just thank Nancy, and I should have said it during PSE's presentation, that, you know, it wasn't that long ago that. You know, we had ten non-storm adages in a year and. We don't have them. We simply don't have them. So it's, it's been a huge turnaround in a relatively short time. Thank you.
Councilmember file.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I want to thank the city staff for all your hard work, Mrs. Gregory for staying on with us to, to really follow. Us through this budget process and we really appreciate you and all you've done for the city of Kenmore. You know, I, I'm really grateful for the work that's being done on. Diversity and equity and I wanted to applaud my fellow council member, Deputy Mayor Nigel Harebig, who stood up against bias and hate recently. It takes a powerful and strong person to, to speak up for those who are marginalized and hurt. Through hate language and speech that sometimes can lead to further escalation of violence. So thank you. I'm really excited to share that. I've been supporting a, a project together with the city of Kenmore and the nonprofit partnership of PERC. To help mark stormwater drains as Simon's safe. And so that is just getting started. They're in their starting points of conversations on how that might further along. So I look forward to hearing a little bit more about that process. And I would like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we recognize today as Indigenous People Day.
Moving to second at any discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post. Motion passes.
Sorry, could you clarify who seconded that? I got distracted by the adorable puppy.
That was Councilmember O'Keane.
Thank you. Sorry about my puppy.
All right. Is that all? Councilmember file.
Yes, Mayor Baker. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I, the, one of the weird things about going last is everybody else has already said everything I was going to say on most of the things on the agenda. Rob, great presentation. I appreciate everything you guys have put into this. Same to Joanne. I kept quiet during the PSE presentation, but it has been really nice to not have to throw away my entire fridge at all. In the last, I don't know, probably two years, which has been a major change and I really appreciate the work that they've done on that. And just for the public sake, I know I emailed all of you about this earlier to say before the meeting, but just for the public sake. I just wanted to maybe explain what happened that prompted people to come to a Kenmore City Council meeting and talk about a Cairo talk show host. Last Wednesday, Dory Monson tweeted out what I viewed as a fairly transphobic tweet. I flagged it for the head of Seattle Pride, who also happens to be Deputy Mayor of Burien, just to make sure they were aware of what he said. That's all I did. What Pride went and did with it is between them and their board. They ended up calling for Dory to apologize and the Seahawks in Cairo opted to suspend Monson for the time being. I didn't get Dory off the air. I simply pointed out his tweet to a friend. And his employers made their own decision on his employment. I'd also point out, and I know I shouldn't have to say this, but this is all done on my own time without using any city resources. And in my capacity as a private citizen, while I support Mr. Monson's ability to say whatever he wants, his employer is under no obligation to keep him in their employ. There are consequences to speech. I have absolutely no regrets standing with my trans friends against that sort of hate speech. I would. Done it once, I'll do it again, but I just want to explain that for the public, why public comment was so interesting today. So and not about anything Kenmore related, so. That's all I've got. Good meeting, folks.
Thank you. Now you went last, now I have to really go last, so everybody has really said everything. However, I think I got you all beat. I emailed you, Mr. City Manager, last week after reading your letter and telling you it was one of the best ones I think you've done in your, in your tenure here. It was a really, really good letter and I'm truly appreciative of all, all your effort that went into that and staffs. Outstanding job. And if there's no other business to come in front of us, we are adjourned. Bye bye, everybody.